Contractors, these things are helping me make sure that that project is completed as well as making sure everything is done safely and efficiently for the students and for the City of Prairie View. There was a concern in regards to the fire last week at Panthe Hill Apartments. That fire, there was a burn ban in effect. The burn ban was canceled the following day, I'm sorry, the day before that burn took place. So, just to give you example, if the burn happened on Friday, the burn ban, the burn ban that was in effect was canceled that Thursday. So when the burning took place that Friday, that was a controlled burn by the apartment, I'm sorry, by the apartment, Panthe Hill Apartments. It was away from the apartments, it was further in the back, and there was no threat to any students as well as to any buildings. I went over there, I supervised, I personally had some other fire trucks to come out, and basically, like I said, since it was a controlled burn, all we was trying to do was just keep it from jumping across into the woods, just wet it down some, and then turn it over to Panthe Hill Apartments contractors and let them just put dirt over it just to cover it up. So, once again, there was no threat to any buildings, it was way in the back, away from the building, there was no threat to any students. So, if there's any concern, I wanted to make sure that was addressed.
Item number one, consider and take action for approval of the meeting minutes for the regular city council meeting on August 13th, 2018. What's council's pleasure?
(inaudible)
Is that?
(inaudible) minutes in your packet?
So that's one and two? Okay, so we'll keep moving. Item number three, discuss, consider and take action to award contract. (inaudible) Discuss, consider and take action to award contract for $350,000 community development block grant and the bids regarding the Alta Vista sewer upgrade, LJA Engineering. Mr. Francis? I understand Mark, the engineer couldn't join us this evening?
Yes, that's correct.
And?
Definitely mayor, citizens, council meetings. My name's Andy Francis with LJA Engineering. We're a substitute for Mark, unfortunately unable to make the meeting tonight, but hopefully there's no concerns. Of course, I might have been driven because I'm a tech side of the business, but I want to say that contractors are very capable, contractors who've been helping us for several years, so with that said, I'll step back and let the mayor process with it.
Okay. I was asked by our city acting city attorney to read earlier into the record, for the record as well as for the public. This is from LJA Engineering, and this is addressed to myself and city council, and I believe council has a copy. Regarding bid tabulation and recommendation of award for construction of Alta Vista sanitary sewer rehabilitation, LJA project number E-227-0010. Mayor and city council, bids for construction of the reference project were received on Thursday, August 23rd, 2018, at 10:30 a.m. at City Hall located 44500 Business Highway 290, Prairie View, Texas, 77445, and subsequently read in public. Six contracting firms submitted bids for the project. The bidders from low to high, the correct total amounts bid are as follows. Contractors Solution Services, $232,467.50. Tomek's Construction, $239,424.50. T Construction LLC, $264,348.50. Texas Pride Utilities, $266,170. Horseshoe Construction, $300,092.50. PM Construction and Rehab, IPR, $333,270.50. Copy of the bid tabulation is attached, the bidding documents of the bidders were examined and found to be in order. Our investigation of King Solutions Services LLC included a review of their surety bond, references of previous projects, and past work experience. Based on our investigation, we recommend awarding the contract to the low bidder, King Solutions Services LLC. The total amount bid by the low bidder was $232,467.50 and is within available funds. There are a couple of things regarding the scope of the project, and this will be available at the front counter if anyone wants to get a copy of it tomorrow, because all of this is public information. But, it is really detailed, so I'll read some by way of example. Clean 12-inch and smaller gravity sanitary sewers, television inspection of 12-inch and smaller gravity sanitary sewers, 8-inch sewer reconstruction by pipe bursting with 8.65-inch polydethylene pipe, normal connection, deep connection, short service, long service connection, manhole reconstruction. So it goes into a lot of details. What I also want to write into the record is that in applying for this grant, working with project management who has helped us previously, Nick Houston, the LJA Engineering was selected from a process by the council some months ago, about a year or so ago, somewhere in that ballpark. And what was done was, we were going after the revenue for water sewer type rehab, which we need quite a bit of throughout the city. And so, what I did in being the, among other things, the public works supervisor, was I got with Mr. Darrell Glover, our most tenured public works person, and put him with Mark Havering of LJA Engineering and Nick Houston, and simply asked them, what are issues in the city, and every city has them, what would be the best use of this money? They had about three meetings, for the record, I attended not one of them, and they came back and said, based on the city's history and the emergency repairs and the old clay pipes, they selected and recommended that this $350,000 be used to fix and repair the old clay pipes in Alta Vista, which is our oldest neighborhood in the city. And I'm saying that for the record because since I happen to live in Alta Vista, I want to make the record clear that that recommendation came back from them, all the meetings that they had, I didn't even attend one. But, what we're doing now is we're dealing with the recommendation on who to, which bidder to choose. Counselor Rowland?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too have concerns, as that was stated by some citizens in their comments, to the open bid in public. Since the City of Prairie View, the grant is coming to the City of Prairie View, we're responsible. I recall us going to, we're using LJA because they were actually the ones who helped us to facilitate the grant. But I didn't, you know, I've asked many times, we haven't received a copy of the RFP. Was council, can you show where council received a copy of the RFP? I think you have several firms that bid it, and that's good, but one, was it put in a local newspaper? If it was, which paper and what date? And there are no local firms that is on this list, and so, again, I need those two questions answered, and I have a subsequent question. Well, I don't know if that's right, LJA.
Ms. Dickey, do you know which newspaper it was published in?
It was published in the Waller County News Citizen, which was prior to me arriving.
So, we have the date?
I can pull the ad, it's not an issue. I can pull.
So I think we have, again, on everything, is it, is it Waller County Citizen, News Citizen? One of the questions is that we asked for council to receive a copy of, maybe we did it before, but moving forward, that for all RFPs that we receive a copy of the RFP to send out, in addition to, or just so we have a copy? Those are my three questions.
Well, there were two meetings held right in this room, as she stated, they were both published and announced, but they were held right in this room. One of them, you have the date in LJA's letter of Thursday, August 23rd, is when the bids on the reference project were received.
Is one of the local company, we are a local, we are a (inaudible) right now?
And LJA was selected by council at a prior meeting, and one of the reasons for that was, in reading through with Mr. Houston, we saw there was an opportunity to increase the likelihood of getting the funding if we already had the collaboration in place. So we brought that to council, council selected LJA out of those that participated in that process, and subsequently, we were awarded the $350,000, and since just LJA and project management have been doing the paperwork, it's been brought up at and to council several times in the last 12 months. But, that's in response to your. Ms. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
My, you know, I don't have a problem, I do remember voting to approve us going after the grant for $350,000 with LJA Engineering. My only concerns and questions for council and for the citizens is that we were asked to have, we were asked to be given the information as we move forward in this process, like the RFP, to be able to, again, we had some citizens who asked questions about it as if they didn't know. So that's the first thing for transparency. The second, you know, we just want to be clear that, you know, putting $350,000 community block grant on a piece of paper does not inform us of what's going on, and so we just want to make sure that, that again, we're working together to move forward, and so I don't have any additional questions.
Counsel, any questions for Mr. Francis, or in this case, myself, the process?
So, do, will we get a total, so once this bid, so $350,000, how much is, will we get a breakdown of how much everyone gets paid? Did we get that from you?
Yes, sir.
When can I, when can we receive?
That's something that Mr. Havering will have for you, so I would imagine probably next couple of weeks.
Okay, so, to have the breakdown on the company who's going to do the general work, how much your company's going to get paid, and everything else, and we'll get that funded.
Mark Havering, (inaudible).
All we really need is LJA's fees because you've got
Breakdown of all fees that are
Two and a half detailed pages of the $232,000.
Should we have that up front? Shouldn't we have the total?
No.
Should we have the total before we vote on?
Their fees were presented to us, I don't recall what they were.
If you have a copy, I'd definitely love to see it, we can vote on it right now today.
Well, as you said, you were here when they were selected, so you got a copy too.
(inaudible) but at this point, I don't have any information, but it is part of the overall package.
Yep.
(inaudible).
We can certainly make sure council gets that updated information, given that I would say in the next week or so, because it will be separate from this anyway, except for the $232,000. As a matter of fact, when it all factored in, I think it was approximately at a bid meeting, something like 80, 89, somewhere in the $80,000 range that we were coming in under the $350,000.
So it wasn't (inaudible)?
Yes.
For clarification purposes, Ms. Dickey, you said the RFP went out before you came as city secretary? So around what month would you?
I got here in September, so this was
So, pretty far back, so, and that, and when it was posted in the Waller County Citizen, it put on there the date for August 23rd, for
The bid of?
Yeah, for the bid to be there?
Yes.
Okay, so after that, was there any more time where it was put out there? Or was it just put in the newspaper months ago, and then there was no, you know, all of?
No, there was something done a lot more recently than that, stating the date for submission, because these submissions are relatively recent, as well as the date of opening the bids, that was like, I wouldn't give it more than 30 days.
That was like put out there that there would be someone on August 23rd?
Mm-hmm, yes.
And it was
It is required for the grant.
So, well, how was it put out in the, when you say it was given to, or put out there like 30 days ago, how was it put out?
Newspaper.
So it went in the newspaper again, or?
Should have been.
So I'm saying
It should have been published, it should have been published for all of us to be aware of this particular bid opening at that 15 minute.
Do you know if it was?
I don't know if it was or not, but I would manage to show that I woke up from Mark Havering.
We have met all legal requirements for posting. That includes the civil rights posting, there are many postings, and that's why y'all are asking me for dates, but I can't give you the exact date that it was posted. I believe the original was done by Ms. Smith, and as we moved forward, then there were further postings that I had to do in the paper. But there are legal dates that we absolutely have to hit.
Could I ask that, moving forward, that we get all information with dates, with things, and prepare for us so we can be able to make some decisions? Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Rowland? I move, I, I move that we move this agenda item to September 10th, to discussion, take, consider and take action to award contract of $350,000 community development block grant for Alta Vista until we get all the information we need to be able to make the best informed decision for the City of Prairie View.
Sir.
Okay. It's been properly moved and seconded that item number three, discuss, consider and take action to award contract for $350,000 community development block grant, bid Alta Vista sewer upgrade, be moved to September 10th until council gets all necessary information. Okay? Call for the questions?
I'm ready.
You ready, Ms. Counselor Jones?
All right. I don't see why we wait till the next following meeting, being that we trust LJA Engineering Company to go out and basically do the work for us, so the work has already been done and considered. Now, the way the process went about, we might disagree upon that, but as far as the matters and which need to take place, I feel like the draw has already been done, so there's no point for us to wait till September 10th, being that Ms. Dickey stated that all the posting was done, was beneath the deadline, so I don't see why we should wait instead of taking action today.
Any other unreadiness?
I'd like to also remind council, we just did this recently where we did the bank account. Remember, we set up the bank account for this particular grant. I just want to remind everybody, that's the same grant we were working on.
Yeah, my, the unreadiness is not on not knowing about the project. We voted on the project a year ago, like you said, it was posted before you got here. My concern is making sure that all the citizens and all the people, because it's a tax, this is dollars that are coming into the city, that it's just open for the public, there's no problem with anything, we just want to make sure that everything is done in fair and in order. That's simply it.
Okay. Any other unreadiness? Counselor Rowland?
Counselor Rowland, could you, your motion stated to add all the additional information, can you clarify specifically the additional information so we can make sure that in the next meeting?
We asked, so I think one of the questions was to ask when the, when all the things were submitted to the newspaper, and the question that a citizen had was, was it, was the bids open in public, and who was there? Were you, you were there?
I was for that.
Okay.
And I kept minutes.
What is that additional information?
Give, item by item, the additional information that you request.
The information that went out to the public, if LJA sent an RFP, have any of you seen the RFP? The answer is no. And so I'm simply saying, all I'm simply saying is if, how can you vote on something if you haven't even seen it? And so I don't want to, I'm not trying to, all I'm saying is that, I trust that, we've, I voted, and I was a member who voted to bring LJA in. We asked for certain things once they came in, and we've been asking for, for RFPs on other grant projects prior to, like this same thing. So all I'm simply asking is that we have all the information to better make a form decision.
I agree with you, I'm telling you to specify what you want to have, that way, when we get into the next meeting, we can make sure that we have all the information.
All the information that Ms. Dickey has on this particular grant, she should have in office, so if we have that information, we'll be able to make a
So far, we have the newspaper posted. What else would you require in order to make the decision, counsel? If it's not on me?
The R, would you like for that to be? The RFP was the first thing I asked for, so that's my item.
The RFP was presented when we selected LJA, it was selecting them for the request for proposal for this $350,000, that's a part of the (inaudible).
Again, I'm simply saying, if we have all these things, and y'all are seeing it so easily, we should be able to go walk in a folder, pull it out, and hand it to us. That's all I'm saying. Call for the questions.
Thank you. And the, in restating the motion, it's to discuss, consider and take action on item number three, the $350,000 community development block grant, be moved to September 10th, pending whatever additional information on this project. Am I correct?
Any and all additional information is not included in today's plan.
Yep. Okay, you heard the motion, ready for the questions?
Questions.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Three, okay, the motion's denied.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Jones?
I move that we award the contract of $350,000 community development block grant, bids Alta Vista sewer upgrade by LJA, and the mayor to the lowest bid, to the lowest bidder, which was $232,000.
Okay, so we probably moved and seconded that the council awards the contract for $350,000 community development block grant, bid Alta Vista sewer upgrade to the lowest developed, lowest bidder for $232,467.50, which happens to be King Solutions Services. You close the motion, ready for the questions?
Questions.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Can I see a show of hands?
Opposed, have the same right?
Opposed.
Okay, motion passed.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Item number, oh, now we got administration, Ms. Dickey, everything you want?
No report, I gave one last reading. Unless you have something to add, Mayor?
I've got one that may fall under, but this is basically, and let's make sure we copy council, because I know we just are seeking to apply for an additional grant.
Yes, sir.
So let's forward that email for me, myself, Nick Houston, Mark maybe, let's forward that to council. There's another request for proposal for administration professional services. This one is directly related to us going after some funding behind Hurricane Harvey. There's a lot of funding regarding infrastructure mitigation and buyout activities in city and council related to the 2017, presidentially declared disaster associated to Hurricane Harvey, DR-4332. So, again, I just brought the one page, or I think this is a 29-page thing, but let's forward the email, and if council wants a hard copy from there, that way they'll have the initial information, because we just posted that in the newspaper this week?
Correct.
Yeah, so we just put that in the newspaper this week, so we'll be informing council, but, again, this is going after some of the countless dollars states and feds have with Hurricane Harvey to try to assist our impacted residents. Counselor Jones?
May you please state what newspaper that was posted in, for the citizens and everybody to deal with.
That would be the Waller Times, that's the city's newspaper since
Yeah, that's the only local paper publication now that
With a weekly publication.
And again, that was just an announcement, but we will get that information to council post days. Municipal court. Judge?
Have the administration. I thought we were supposed to, there's some things that we should have been on the agenda as far as administration. Mr. Mayor? That is in the minutes, and so we're trying to figure it out.
Oh, sure, since we have the best, sure, I'm sorry, Judge. Yes. Let's put it on the floor, and then we can discuss. Item one, consider and take action for approval of meeting minutes for regular city council meeting on August 13th, 2018. What's council's pleasure?
On the second set of minutes, Mayor, I couldn't get to those minutes because they're in Ms. Meyer's computer.
That's item two?
That's item two, so if we can skip that, and I'll bring them forward.
Okay. So we'll hold or postpone on those, no problem. If we can get a motion, put item one on the floor, then we can open up the discussion. Counselor Jones?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we consider, or go back to item number one on the agenda.
Okay. The motion put on the floor, and then we'll open the discussion. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we consider and take action for approval of meeting minutes for regular city council meeting on August 13th, 2018. You heard the motion, now the floor's open for discussion. And I believe that Olson Attorney was joining us? Yes, sir, you free to join our city, sanitary (inaudible) if you would. And let's get your name for the record again? Charles Williams. Okay, Mr. Williams?
You're more than one (inaudible).
Ms. Dickey, you did show when each of the council
I did.
Men and women came.
Yes.
Okay, unreadiness on the minutes of August 13th, 2018.
Were the minutes included in our packet? No, she's
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Counselor Randall, you weren't here with us.
I have one thing to say about, about meeting minutes on number six. It talks about, I made a motion to have a training workshop on September 22nd, and it's seconded by Jones, and we all approved of it. I know at another meeting, we talked speculational as if we're still having a training workshop, so I just wanted to put out that that training workshop's still on September 22nd, so we're all aware that if you didn't want to come.
Counselor Jones? Mr. Wallace, did you check the calendar to see, I mean, sorry, Counselor Wallace, did you check the calendar to see the 22nd was open? Are you putting it in the calendar?
Uh, no. No, sorry. No, Dickey, did you put it in the calendar for September 22nd for the training workshop?